Zoning. Are we recording? Okay. Again, welcome to the February meeting in Niskuna as any zoning board of appeals. Linda, we go ahead and call the role, please.
Mr. Latif.
Here.
Mr. Dolman, we're going to wait on Ms. Pacheco.
Here.
Mr. Daly.
Here.
Mr. Stein.
Here.
Mr. Antonikowski.
Here.
Chairperson Hope.
Here. Will you go ahead and the first matter on the agenda is the review of the January meeting minutes? Is there any discussion on those minutes? Has everybody received those minutes? Would anybody like to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make the motion.
A motion has been made. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Kenny, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman? Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
abstain.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Hope.
Abstain. The minutes have been approved for January. Prior to calling the first matter on the agenda for this evening, I am going to recuse myself from that matter. And I believe Mr. Latif is going to assume the role of chairman for that matter.
Okay, so the last meeting we had to delay it to today, so we can have the applicant here because we noticed he didn't have enough time to come to the meeting. So is the applicant here for the? If Linda, if you can call the case and then we'll have the applicant come up up here.
Request for rehearing of the case of 701 Bobby Court, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential district to maintain a six-foot fence in the front yard along Lyshak Hill Road.
Okay, is the applicant available? Can you please come up, state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, sure. Thanks. Joe Weber, I'm here on behalf of my son-in-law and daughter, Michael and Emily Gordon. Earlier, I appeared before this board seeking a variance, two-foot variance for a section of fence along Lyshak Hill Road in the town. That request was denied by the board. And when I discussed the matter with the building inspector, he advised that if in fact there's anything new that could be, that it could be presented. And that's the reason I'm here tonight.
Okay, so please go ahead and tell us what.
Laura, is it a one-foot variance or is it two?
Well, it's now a one-foot variance I'm seeking.
I just wanted that clarification on the record.
Because they previously received a five-foot area variance, so to get a six-foot fence height, it's a one-foot.
And so the record is clear that one, the five-foot area variance that they received previously, that was prior to the application that they're seeking the rehearing for tonight, correct?
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, so please tell the board, like, what has been changed and why you would need that one foot extra for the fence?
What has changed is basically three things. Approximately a quarter of a mile to the south of the subject property on Lyshak Hill Road is a smoke shop. And when I was here the last time, the smoke shop was just selling cigarettes, beer, junk food, and drug paraphernalia. The smoke shop is now selling under the guise of donating marijuana. They have a room in the back. You come in, they have an ATM machine out front, right out front of that room. They can purchase marijuana. They can get money. They can get, they can purchase some little item and get their marijuana for free. And the result is that has attracted quite a few unsavory types, and there's a lot of kids hanging around there, too. So the foot traffic up and down Lyshak Hill Road has increased quite a bit. The, there are also 29, and I sent, I hope you have my file. There are 29 registered sex offenders within two miles of the intersection of Lyshak Hill Road and Bobby Court, where the subject property is. I can't say for sure that that's a problem, but there's only one place to go if you're on either side of Bobby Court, and that's that smoke shop. There are no other stores there, no place else, and the foot traffic is just picked up quite a bit again. With the, with respect to one foot, one additional foot, the average male, myself, I can, I can peek over a five-foot fence, but I can't peek over a six, six-foot fence. So it's only a foot, but it could be, it could be a big difference. We've had some problems on Bobby Court. I only know of one call to the police, and that was my son-in-law, so state that right up front. There are six corner lots on Lyshak Hill Road that have six-foot fences, pretty much identical to the one that we have. Not only on the front of the house, which is, you know, the typical sort of front yard, but along the side as well. And I sent photographs of those also. There are numerous such occasions in, in the town of Lyshak Hill. One on my street, six-foot vinyl fence along the front. There are six such instances along Pierce Road in the town. I hope I don't get anyone in trouble. And the last thing that's changed is my first granddaughter, Laney Gordon, has arrived. So my daughter is home with her daughter quite a bit. And I realize that the board cannot help us with the smoke shop issue. The board cannot help us with the sex offender issue. The board can help us with this minor request for a fence variance. It seems very minor to me. The fence that we replaced was a rotted wooden fence. This fence is a beautiful vinyl fence.
You can't get into the details of the case, just what's changed?
Don't get into the detail because tonight, all we're gonna do is we're gonna see if we can rehear your case. And then those details, if, if we approve the rehearing, then we will be able to hear all the stuff. So basically, we need the basic of why you need that one foot.
Yep.
For rehearing.
Okay, I didn't realize that. I thought this was the rehearing.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
And I'm finished. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So for us, all we need to do here for, we have five people. It has to be unanimous. And if you get the five people unanimous vote, then you will have a rehearing. Otherwise, it will go back to the original, what it was with the town.
Understood.
Okay. Anybody on the board wants to clarify why you want a rehearing for this case? Any questions for the applicant?
I have a question. You said there's six, five lots or six-foot fences on?
Corner lots on Lyshak Hill Road.
You said there's a lot of foot traffic. Can you explain that?
Yes.
No, we, you guys, all we're deciding is whether or not that there's a substantial enough change to allow a rehearing. If you guys allow a rehearing, we do a renotice. And then you can ask about the fence materials and everything. We're looking at the difference between the case that came to us and the case that, the changes that he's saying. You have both cases in your file. You have the old one and the new one. He's here to explain any differences between the old case and the new case. And you really need to parse that apart and decide if, in fact, the changes that he's discussed, I'm hearing potentially changing in retail nearby. I don't know if the sex offenders went up or down. I don't know if that, I don't remember if that was in the first one. And then the family having a baby. Really? Um, Lena, correct me if I'm wrong. I think those are the only three things that you're looking at right now.
No, I agree.
Yes, but I would say that I think Mr. Daly's question as to the alleged increase in foot traffic as a result of the change in the retail is a fair question.
Correct.
Okay, any other question from the board? Okay, and if I don't hear any questions, thank you, sir. You can sit down if you want. So any motion, anybody wants to make a motion to approve the rehearing?
I'm gonna make a motion. He said there's six corner fences. He said there's drug dealers here. Is that what he's saying? Can you prove that?
That's not what was said. There is a change in this, he, what he said was that there is a change in the retail shop. It was a smoke shop, that there's been some change in activity and perhaps what is being sold there that has led to a change in foot traffic. But he did not make any allegations as to drug dealing.
I'm gonna make a motion. Will you accept it?
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
There's a.
That's okay. You can sit down, okay? So we're making a motion. What's your motion, Mr. Daly?
Motion that.
For rehearing?
Yes, for the hearing, yes.
So I have a motion for rehearing any second. To rehear that case. Okay, I'm gonna second the motion for rehearing. Linda, if you can call the role, please.
Mr., Mr., or Ms. Pacheco.
This is a difficult decision for certain. And I know that the board has to be unanimous in this for it to be reheard. I'll vote yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
I too think this is a difficult decision. This was last heard just last year. Appears the zoning board would have had everything added in its ability in front of them at the time. So on the balance, I'm gonna vote no.
Mr. Antonikowski?
I'm, I'm also gonna vote no. I, I don't see the substanti- uh, substantiality of the evidence presented that would allow for a rehearing in this matter.
Acting Chair Latif.
I vote yes. And unfortunately, this fence did come in front of the board at the time. We did not approve it. And it's not unanimous, so it's not approved. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna turn it back to Mr. Hope, Chairman Hope.
Mr. Kenny, we call the next matter, please.
Request from 40 William Street to extend the zoning board of appeals decision at 40 William Street. At the October 16, 2024 meeting, the ZBA granted the request for variances to construct a single-family home with a septic system. Town code section A235-10D provides unless otherwise specified, any order or decision of the board for a permitted use shall expire if a building or occupancy permit for the use is not obtained by the applicant within 90 days from the date of the decision. However, the board may extend this time an additional 90 days. The ZBA's decision expired on January 16, 2025. Therefore, a 90-day extension to the original variance is required.
Thank you. Is the applicant present?
Dan Hersberg for the applicant.
Mr. Hersberg, could you tell us a little bit about, well, first let me ask, the 90-day extension is from January 16th, correct?
I think that's what we're applying for.
That would be from, from January 16th, okay. Mr. Hersberg, can you explain why you haven't been able to comply with the town code to date? And why you need the additional 90 days? And then in addition to that, whether or not you're gonna be able to comply within that timeframe?
Yeah, the builder had a basic plan. He has not yet been able to complete it to the level required to submit for a building permit. So he can't submit for the building permit yet. He intends to apply for it within the balance of the 90 days. I'm replacing Nick Daniels, who originally made the presentation. He's left the firm. He's now with Saratoga County as a public health engineer.
Okay, with, with respect to your conversations with the builder, do you believe that you're gonna be able to comply if we were to extend it 90 days, that you would be able to meet that deadline?
I think he will be able to. He's got a, he's got the plans out, and he's got to get more details on it to meet the building code.
Are there other questions from members of the board? Okay. Having heard no additional questions, I would, is there anybody in the public that wishes to be heard for or against this application? Having heard no one in the public that's interested, is there any discussion on the matter? I, does anybody wish to make a motion relative to this application?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to extend it 90 days. And it sounds like the applicant is ready to go ahead and proceed with the project. For those reasons, I will make a motion to.
Thank you, Mr. Latif. A motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Kenny, will you call the role, please?
Mr., Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, your request has been granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Kenny, we call the next matter on the calendar for this evening.
Appeal by Christopher Osterhout for a variance from section 220-16A2C and section 220-4 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 2974 Oak Tree Lane, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district to maintain winter, winter storage of an RV in the front yard, which is not allowed by code. Section 220-16A2C states that the storage of house coaches, campers, and trailers, boats or car trailers of any kind is not permitted in the front yard of any residential lot between November 1 and March 31. Whether or not on a driveway, the property is a corner lot as defined by section 220-4 and has frontages on Oak Tree and Ash Tree Lane. As proposed, the RV will be located in the front yard on Ash Tree Lane between November 1 and March 31. Therefore, a variance from this section is required. 12 notices were mailed, zero responses.
We have, please come forward. Sir, before you speak, Laura, how did this matter come before the board?
I'm not sure about that. I can see if I can find some records.
Okay. Sir, before we, we start, okay, I wanted to just point out to you that we're a seven-person board. We only have six individuals here this evening. In order to grant your variance request, you would need four individuals to approve, okay? A majority of the seven-person board. You have the option. There won't be any additional fees. If you want to table the matter until you have a full seven-person board, or you can move forward this evening. It's up to you.
Well, I'd like to think I can make enough of a case with the board that's here.
Okay, I just, once you, once you move forward, it's like you're electing here.
I understand.
Okay, so you wish to move forward?
I do. Could I clarify what might have spurred this on in the first place? Would that be possible?
If you have additional knowledge with respect to it, okay, by all means, you can include that in your application, in, in your presentation.
Okay, so back in September of last year, we have a renter that lives directly across the street from us. The amount of stuff that he was beginning to collect on his property was starting to really upset some of us. So one of our neighbors, who knows the building inspector, basically called the town and asked that he maybe pay a visit to this person's house. At that point, I believe he walked around the house, and I believe it was September, could have been October, walked around the house, apparently issued this, this gentleman a citation, this renter. At that point, turned around and noticed that there was a trailer in our yard. Now.
You're talking about the building inspector?
The building inspector.
Okay.
I believe that's who visited the property. I wasn't present at the time. So we received a notice. And actually, the timeline isn't exactly correct because I think he made a point to visit him twice to make sure that he was in fact meeting the criteria that, you know, had been put forth when he issued the citation. At that point, it was actually when he visited our property or noticed our property, had the trailer on it, it was actually November 20th of 2024. So I think this was his second visit to the man across the street's house. At that point, we had had a few trees cut down. Now, I'll be perfectly honest. I had no idea I had two front yards. I thought I was parking my trailer in my, basically my backyard. So shame on me for not noticing those things.
Sir, let me, let me just stop you for one second.
Yeah.
And it's not your fault. It's my fault. I wasn't here last month. I took a month off, so I'm rusty, okay? Could you state your name and address for the record?
Christopher Osterhout, sorry.
Okay, and, and you reside at the residence, correct?
2975 Oak Tree Lane.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you were indicating that you had some trees removed from the property.
Which I believe might have shed awareness to the building inspector. We've had a trailer on our property in that spot for at least eight years. This was the first time it was ever cited as a problem. It was then that we were made aware that we have two front yards because we live on a corner lot.
So as I understand your request for an application or variance, you're looking for a variance with respect to only this calendar year, correct?
So we are in fact, because of, we're, we're actually hoping that we can get this a permanent variance.
Okay, so that was not the request as I read it. I read the request for a variance for this season only, it was clear. So are you looking to amend your request now to make it a permanent?
Is that, is that possible for us to amend the request at this point?
Or do we? No, I believe you can amend it to this evening.
Okay.
If that's what you wish to do.
I mean, at this point, I think it, it, the price of everything is going up. Trailer storage is extremely expensive. So we are in fact amending it to be permanent.
Okay, so.
It's cited correctly. Clarification, usually my standpoint is that if you, you can amend for less but not for more, but it doesn't look like the notice specified it was only for the season. So Laura, can you clarify that?
Yeah, no, it's cited correctly for it to be permanently located there between November 1 and March 31. It doesn't have a year associated with it. That chunk is actually directly related to the code that's cited. And I think that's how we have cited it in the past. So if you grant a variance to the property that allows an RV to be stored between November 1 and March 31, that takes care of the code issue.
So what we're establishing, the notice that was sent to the neighbors didn't indicate that it was only for this year. So anybody, everybody's put on notice that you were looking for.
So if I could just point out a few things extra, if that's okay?
You certainly can, but, okay, why don't, why don't you point out what, well, let me, let me ask you this. You, you were talking about storage of the RV. Where have you looked to, or what alternatives have you sought?
Well, generally, the self-storage options.
I'm not looking generally. What have you, what, what, what other alternatives have you actually looked at?
Have we actually looked at?
Yeah.
You mean specifically?
Yeah, what, what are the prices on the, the storage that you've, you've saw?
Okay, well, I don't have that information in front of me. No, I don't.
Okay, so what efforts have you made to look at alternatives to storing it on your front yard?
Not, apparently not enough.
Well, I'm.
I, I can't say that I've gone out and I've shopped around because I haven't. It's usually in the hundreds, especially. We did look at one option, which was a county fairgrounds, Washington County Fairgrounds, because we knew someone that actually stored their trailer there. It was over $600 for the season. So that much I can say that we've looked into.
So one of the, one of the factors that the board has to consider is what efforts you've made to mitigate the need for the variance. One of the concerns we have is there's lots of corner properties with, you know, double front yards, including my own. And so we want to make sure that, you know, the next person that comes in here and, and is saying that they want to put their trailer on the front. We have to be able to distinguish why your case is unique to every other case.
Okay.
And what steps that you've mitigated to make it, I guess, a necessary requirement that you stored in your front yard.
So in talking to some of my neighbors, I haven't looked at storage units personally, but in talking to some of my neighbors that do store their trailers over the winter, there is a place on, off of 155. They quoted us somewhere around $350 per our neighbor. Now, we didn't go there directly and ask them. But our friends that store their trailer up in Washington County, similar size to ours, said it was about $600 for the season. So as far as it goes, if that kind of suffices your, your, your inquiry, that's the best that I have done so far. I haven't looked at self-storage units or any of those lots where it's gated in because I just figured they were off the table when it comes to what we could personally afford.
And, and am I correct, Laura, there is no place on this particular, well, there is a place. He could store it behind his home. So you could, you could move the trailer behind your home.
That is, we've actually got a fence, and it is a very small backyard, and we would have to go up a sufficient incline. It would get bogged down in the mud and the spray. There's absolutely no place other than where we have it on our property that we could store it because of the fact if we stored it in the upper driveway, it would take up, it would be wider than the upper driveway. The upper driveway is pretty thin. The right side of that driveway is on a hill. It's bordering a hill, so the weight of the trailer alone, I feel would be detrimental to the hill. I'd be concerned that it might do something to the hill. Plus, I don't think it would fit on there. It would be wider than the actual driveway is. The driveway below, I actually created a, a pad for many years ago for other trailers that we've had. It's not aesthetically ugly. I actually have, which you might have in your records there, that I submitted a petition from all of my bordering neighbors, some of whom are here tonight, that have no problem, basically. They signed this saying that they have no problem with the trailer being parked there. The only ones that didn't get on that list were the renters versus the owners.
And the renters would be the, the street directly across Ash Tree Lane from you, correct?
Yeah, no, actually across Oak Tree Lane.
Oak Tree Lane?
Yes, that's.
And with respect to the grays, where the grays reside relative to where they?
They are, well, they are across from us, but our property is extremely long. We live in a, a large ranch, so they're on the upper driveway. They're directly across from the upper driveway.
Would they be able to even see the trailer?
Yes.
How about Ms. Lambert?
Right here.
Okay. Well, hold on, hold on. I'm just gonna ask them where you live right now. You'll have an opportunity to speak.
Sorry.
Where does Ms. Lambert live?
She is diagonal to our property on the Ash Tree side.
Okay, and she can presumably see the trailer?
Yes.
Same with Ms. O'Brien and Ms. Streisel?
Yes, they're directly across from us in the Ash Tree, Ms. O'Brien is, and Ms. Streisel is, I guess you would say, directly in, behind my backyard.
Okay, let me just ask you this final question, and then I'll, I'm gonna open it up to other members of the board. Why is your situation different than anybody else who owns a RV or trailer in Niskuna? They would like to park their trailer?
Because it's not obstructing the intersection at all. The actual road veers to the right. This trailer is on the left. It is over 15 feet past the border of the road on our property. There's absolutely nothing aesthetically unpleasing about it. I've created a pad. I keep up my property. This has never been an issue for anyone around us up to this point. Beyond that, we, you know, and, and all I can do is, is ask for your sympathies on this, but we are, I'm a small business owner. I don't have a lot of money. My, anybody that's ever ran a business knows what it's like to run a business. You generally don't have a lot of money. Our trailer is our vacation. We have two dogs, and unfortunately, if I have to spend a lot of money on storage, it will probably eradicate the trailer. So I'm asking you guys to consider that as well. That's. So I'm asking you guys to consider that as well. That's probably the best answers I can give you.
I, I understand, and I appreciate your honesty and, and being straightforward and not trying to give you a hard time with these questions that we, we really have to have an understanding of. Are there other members on the board that have questions for this, uh, applicant?
Uh, yes, Chairman Hook, I have some questions.
Okay.
Good evening. Um, I have a question for you about the driveway off of Oak Tree Lane. Um, when you come into your property along that driveway, uh, is there any space to, towards your neighbor on the left as you're looking? That could be used for that?
Unfortunately, that's where the hill is. So our property was built up, uh, I believe the man that built the home was CT Mail. Uh, basically it looked like he brought in fill from what I understand from my neighbors that lived there prior to the house being built. Um, and essentially the, the property is higher on all sides surround, you know, of anybody that's surrounding it. So essentially that piece that you're talking about is basically just a an incline or a decline down into the neighbor's property.
Okay, so your driveway is higher than that?
It is.
It slopes down towards their?
Yeah, I'd say it's probably a six-foot decline from our driveway to the neighbor's side yard.
So it's not suitably level for vehicles, is what you're saying?
No.
Um, what's the nature of the pad that you did create for the trailer?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
What is the material and size of the pad that it's sitting on?
It's, uh, stone and I've got it, uh, um, bordered with, uh, pressure-treated six by sixes. So it's, it's, um, I keep up on the weeding every year. The, or the area around it is very well-mowed. But that, does that answer your question?
Partially, thank you. Um, I'm also looking for kind of dimensions.
Uh, it would be ten by twenty. The trailer is twenty feet long. When it's closed up, it's a hybrid, so it opens up for the bedding. Uh, but when it's closed, it's twenty feet long, so the, the pad is twenty by ten.
And when, uh, I, I do have some difficulty and I do want to ask, uh, Laura or Elena about this. In the application, under the first explanation about the benefit, it does state that you are looking for this season only. So I wonder if that colors any of what we are discussing.
No, I mean, as far as he's indicated that he wishes to now change that information to state that it would be permanent. Um, but it doesn't change anything because the neighbors were not noticed that it would only be one season.
Okay, and it doesn't affect, uh, basically what was noticed coming from the town?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you for clearing that up. Uh, how close is that pad to the street along, um, Ash Tree Lane?
Uh, approximately fifteen feet from the edge of the road to the pad itself.
And as you stated before, some of the trees have been taken out on your lot. Were they near that area?
They were. They, so the driveway, we have two driveways, the upper driveway on Oak Tree, the second driveway on Ash Tree where the garage is, because we have a, what you would call, I guess, like a sunken garage. Uh, there were, the lot itself, when we bought the house, was wooded. And the gentleman that built the house basically cut out just enough of the wooded lot to put the house on. The reason I'm saying that is because there were several trees that bordered that Ash Tree driveway. We had two very large ones taken out because they were starting to what appeared to be like getting rot. Uh, like they were getting dangerous, at least one of them that was close to the house. So we had them taken out in middle of October of last year. And at that point, I believe that's when the building inspector might have noticed that we had the trailer parked there. Um, yeah.
Okay, and previously you said, uh, on the back of your house, um, if we were standing on Ash Tree Lane looking at your garage, uh, there is a fence somewhere. Can you describe where that fence is?
Okay, so if you're looking at the house, uh, that, it's a double car garage and essentially this, this would be the front of the house towards Oak Tree. The back of the house would be over here. There is a fence that basically goes up the, uh, distance of the house in the back for our dogs. Um, which was approved by the, the town years ago when we put it in, but as far as it goes, there is, from Ash Tree, the house, the property actually goes up an incline because everything is kind of below us like that, that when the man built the house, it was basically the earth was built up around where he put the, the house. So every direction leading up to that house is basically moving upwards. So does that answer your question?
Partially.
Okay, sorry.
I know it's complicated what I'm asking.
Okay.
Uh, the fence that you described for the dogs in the backyard, does it start at the corner of the house?
It does. It starts at the corner and it goes to the end of the property line.
Does it go directly back towards the property or does it come towards Ash Tree?
Uh, no, it would be directly back. So again, if this is the backyard, it would start at the edge of the house by the back of the house and it would go about, I think, twenty-five feet to the property line and then go back following the property line and then go forwards to the front of the house.
And between where you have put the pad currently for the RV or, um, trailer, between that area and that fence, it's sloping up. I'm just trying to be clear.
It is sloping up. Every, every part of my property that goes towards the house is sloping up towards the house. So it's essentially, I think he built it with the intention that the water would flow away from the house. But in the backyard, it doesn't work that way. So I had to put in French drains to actually divert the water away from the house. Because the property in the backyard actually goes towards the house. So, but it does. It, it goes up. So our driveway actually has two retaining walls on it because the land goes up. So the driveway is sunken. So it would be very difficult to drive a trailer up even to the fence, which isn't acceptable per town code because we would have to in fact put it in our backyard, which means we'd have to take our fence out in order to do it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, my question for Laura, do we get any responses from any of the other neighbors?
No, we didn't get any responses on this one.
Okay, that is all my questions. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Question for Ash Tree. You said that the camper is about twenty feet by?
Twenty feet by eight. So it's on a ten-foot pad.
Okay, and, uh?
Ten foot wide, I should say.
Wide.
Right.
And you don't have any plan on putting anything replacing that and putting something bigger?
I don't see that happening. Um, we camp in, uh, state forests and it's a pain in the butt to try to put anything larger than a twenty footer on, in the woods like that. Generally that forces you into fields where you don't want to be. So I, I think this, I would say that's pretty consistent with what we're gonna stick with.
Okay, so, uh, when you have a park by your house, is it used for any reason? Like, do you have electric running to?
No. So, uh, well, yes, I will say I, I generally do, uh, charge a battery in the springtime and the summer months. Uh, it does have an inverter generator in it, built into it. So there would be, uh, a cord running from my garage out to the camper with it plugged into the camper.
But the camper is not in, in use except stored there?
No, no, we can't, we can't with it all. Usually late spring, all the way through summer.
By your house, you don't use it at all, right?
No, no, we're not using it as a, a residence.
Just wanted to make sure when you have it by your house.
Yes.
That it's not in use. It's basically stored in there.
Uh, correct. The only reason that we run power to it is just to charge the, maintain the battery that's, the battery that's in the camper. Um, yeah, we don't, we don't live in it outside of when we go camping. No.
Laura, a question for you. Uh, we were talking about the size here. If, if this, uh, application was to be approved, and I know it carries on for the next owner of, uh, somebody buys the house, et cetera. Is, is the size would be limited to a camper or how would that work? Because I know we had, we had this before, us before.
Take that one or you want me to take it? I mean, my position would be that you could make it a condition of your approval, but otherwise the size isn't specified in the variance itself. So the variance would be to allow a trailer into RV. But you could, you could, you could make it a condition that it be no larger than the current size without having to come back to the DPA.
Okay, so, thank you. So the, what is the size of the padding again?
Okay, so the, it's, it's a hard shell camper with two bunks that come out.
Right.
So the total length of it, when the bunks are out, is about?
Don't have it out because you store in it without having it out.
Correct, but I, I wasn't sure what you were asking. So
I'm asking.
When it's all condensed, it's twenty feet.
Twenty feet?
The size of the pad. Yes.
Eight by twenty?
Eight, eight feet wide, twenty feet long.
Okay. Uh, i- i- if this was to satisfy your application, that's the size you're looking for, eight by twenty to store something. That's mean you can't buy another camper and store it there?
Fair enough. If that's the case, then that's the case.
Just curious about?
Well, I mean, it would, it, would it be nice to have a slightly larger camper? But I'm not gonna push my luck here. I mean, when it comes down to it, the reason that we're doing what we're doing is because it's, it's hard for us to afford to store uh, an RV for, for six months of the year even. So as far as it goes, if we can't afford to store a camper, we're not gonna certainly go out and buy a, a more expensive camper because we can't afford to. So if, I mean, that's, that's just the reality of it. If we could buy a larger camper, we probably would store it somewhere else. Because we could afford to do that. That's the reason I'm making this case.
But the, the price that Mr. Hook asked you if you looked for prices?
Understand.
And you did mention something about a three hundred. Was that a month or for the season?
No, that was for the season.
Three hundred for the season?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. Nothing else, Mr. Chairman?
Are there any other members of the board that wish to be heard or against the application?
Uh, I just have one, just one question regarding the, the location of the pad. So unless otherwise specified as a condition of the variance, the variance is for the camper to remain somewhere in the front yard.
My, my understanding is that the, the condition, if somebody was to make a motion, they could impose a condition restricting the camper's location to its present location, not to exceed a, uh, a space sufficient for an eight by twenty camper.
And, and also that would be specific to a camper, not any other structure.
I think the person that's making the, oh, well, yes, I, 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 I do that's, that's what's.
Okay, it is, okay, just making sure.
Mr. Chairman, just since we're talking about that, can you tell me how far from the road again?
Believe it's approximately fifteen feet from the edge of Ash Tree on, onto my property to where the pad is.
And how far is it from Oak Tree Lane?
Okay, so if, if, I don't know how I can.
Approximately.
Um, well, it, um.
Because you have a driveway there too, right?
Forty feet? Well, if we're talking about Oak Tree, that would be according to the zoning laws, that would be one front of my house. This camper is literally in the back edge of the Ash Tree side. Fifteen feet from there. I mean, would it help if I drove, wrote, uh, draw a diagram for you?
We've got the diagrams in front of us.
I mean, I, I would say at least forty feet from Oak Tree. I mean, that's, it's a lot. It's basically hidden in a corner of the back of the property. It's just, it's just, again, we thought we were putting it in what we thought was the backyard. We didn't really think that we, that we were putting it in the front yard if we.
Thank you, that's understood.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Is there anybody else on the board that wants to have any questions? Um, is there any members of the public that wish to be heard for or against this application? When he comes, step up to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Christine Lambert. And what else do you need from me?
Your address.
Nine oh two Ash Tree Lane.
Okay.
Could you talk into the mic, ma'am?
Okay.
What would you like to add?
I've, three things. One, if the grays were here, they live right across from Chris and Sarah. They would definitely say no problem, but they're on vacation, so they're, they can't be here tonight. The second thing is they keep their property so nice and neat. And that small camper is covered with a gray cover, so it's, um, yeah.
In the winter, it is?
Yeah, in the winter. That's not the winter. And, um, it's just, it's, it's okay. It's, there's no, um, trash around. The weeds are kept down. And the third thing is really the front of the house is the other area because it comes around. And here's the front of the house on Oak Tree with, uh, the front door and the windows and all. And then if you go around to the side and you look at it, it's the garage. It's not even like a front yard.
So as you can see, several of those trees have actually come down in the front yard.
Sir, you actually have to speak into the mic so that we can pick it up.
I'm sorry. Um, there's, there's, there's two large trees that border that Ash Tree driveway. Those are the ones that we took down, so there's, there's less trees there now and, and, and just so you know that, but that's essentially, yeah, that's accurate. That's where our trailer is parked. So looking from, to your point, Mr. Let, Lettaf?
Lettaf.
Lettaf. You can see how much of a distance there is from Oak Tree to where the trailer actually is, even from the road to where the trailer is on Ash Tree. I, I said approximately fifteen feet. It might even be more. It might be more like twenty. Um, but the fact is, is it's, it's hidden well. That's that, but.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard for or against the application? Anybody else want to speak? Four, two. You can speak for. Would you like to speak? Okay. You state your name and, uh, address for the record, please.
I'm Shirley O'Brien. Uh, nine oh six Ash Tree Lane.
Okay, Ms. O'Brien, what would you like to say?
Um, I'm right across the street and it doesn't bother me at all.
Okay.
So they have a very nice yard and it's lovely to look at, not unlike some others we've seen.
Thank you. Okay, I, I think, uh, we've got enough here to, uh, to contemplate your, uh, variance application. So um, I'm gonna ask, uh, members of the board, is there any discussion on this application? Um, having heard none, uh, does anybody wish to make a motion, uh, for or against this application?
Mr. Jefferson, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, grant the variance as requested. Uh, with the condition that it would be no larger than what would reasonably fit the eight by twenty camper.
Okay, is that the extent of the motion? Any, any reason for that or, or thought process behind it?
Um, I do think, yeah, I guess I should, uh, elaborate. Um, I do think that the, uh, the homeowner has made reasonable attempts at, at storage in other places. Um, has clearly seen the Google view of his address. He is a hundred percent truthful in that his, uh, his property is higher than in other, than other properties around him. I did see that. The several trees does limit your space to put it. Um, as your lovely neighbors pointed out, it does, you are kind of limited on where you could put anything on that property.
That's correct.
And as, as a corner owner myself, I, I understand that. My property sits way back on a, on a corner lot, which means that everything behind you is is only a couple of feet. So I do understand what, you know, the limits of a property is. Um, I do think you attempted to mitigate this by putting a nice pad down. You've done a good job taking care of your property.
Thank you.
Um, so for all of those reasons, that's why I believe the variance should be approved as stated.
Thank you. Uh, motions been made. Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that for all the reasons stated. And I'd like to add the neighbors came on behalf of the applicant and there was no complaints in any shape, form, or manner. Uh, I think he did the best he could. Um, trying to put the trailer. And you're right about they are expensive, the, uh, rent for the season, very expensive.
And the price keeps going up, unfortunately.
So that's the reason why I make the motion that we accept the applicant.
Thank you.
A, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there discussion on the motion?
Uh, yes, I have a question and it may add to the motion. Uh, I believe the motion was. Uh, I believe the motion was about the, uh, adding a condition of the size to what would reasonably fit a 20 foot by eight foot camper. But we also discussed the location on the property as limiting it to uh, where it is currently located in, in the front yard along Ash Tree Lane at it, at its distance from the street. So.
So, so procedurally, a motion's been made and seconded. Um, I don't think, it's not your motion, so I don't know that you can make, put a condition on somebody else's motion.
Actually, once a motion's been made and seconded, there can be a motion to amend.
Okay.
That's what I'm hearing. So the proper procedure for that would be there'd be a motion to amend the motion as presented. Um, then there'd have to be a second on that motion to amend, discussion, a vote on whether that amendment will pass. And then if that amendment passes, then there's a vote on the motion as amended.
Okay.
So I make a motion to amend the first motion to add the condition about location of the pad on the property.
Okay, a motion's been made to amend the, um, existing motion to approve the variance to include, um, uh, an additional restriction on the location um, of the, where the, where the, uh, trailer could be stored on the property. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Okay, so now, uh, uh, Mr. Kenny, you can take a, a roll call on the motion to amend.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes. So now we are, um, back to the original motion as amended. Um, there, there's been a, a motion made and seconded. It's subsequently been amended to include the additional condition. Um, will you call the roll on that motion?
Mr. Latif?
This is a tough one for me because I don't like to set precedent for other people in town to start putting trailers and so on in uh, a corner lot, which it makes it so difficult because you're supposed to be in the backyard, but it's not. Um, but all these neighbors came in. This trailer had been there for eight years. Nobody ever complained. Uh, the applicant, uh, seemed to look to other options, and that's the only option they have. Uh, to me, still, it does cause undesirable change in the neighborhood because it's a trailer. Uh, but with all the positive things they were said, uh, I am going to vote yes for the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Pacheco?
Uh, I will also vote yes, and I appreciate the effort the applicant went to uh, involve his neighbors in, in the discussion. Um, whether it can be achieved by other means feasible, it seems that on the property itself, there are no other suitable locations based on the physical characteristics of this unique corner lot. Um, I agree with my colleague that it is an undesirable change to have a camper in a front lot. But as you said yourself, you weren't even aware that it was a front lot. Um, while it is in my mind substantial because it is again a front lot, I don't think that is uh, changing my mind in, in, in voting to approve this. It does not seem to have any physical or environmental effects. And while it is self-created, it's created, it is not determinative. On the balance, I vote to approve.
Thank you.
Mr. Daly?
I'm going to vote yes. Um, I want to thank you for coming up in your honesty. You poured your heart out to us. You gave honest answers. Um, you're in a dilemma.
Yeah.
Uh, it's expensive what uh, storing anything today.
Yeah.
So that's the reasons why, and your neighbors came up and, um, gave you support, full support. So that's why I'm voting yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Stein?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hope?
Um, I would be, I am a, a no on the application and kind of, uh, outlining, you know, Mr. Latif's thought process. I'm very concerned about the precedent that this sets. Um, with respect to the applicant, the applicant has been very honest and articulated, um, an alternative, uh, feasible alternative in my estimation as to the storage of the trailer, um, at a cost. Uh, but that cost is associated with anyone who owns a trailer in the town is going to face the same type of situation. There's lots of corner lots in the, um, in the, the community. They're going to be similarly situated. I think the board would be hard pressed in the future, um, to, 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 you know, indicate to that, those individuals that they can't have their trailer in their corner lot under very similar circumstances. I don't know that there's going to be too much that would, differentiate your application from the next application that we, that comes before us. Um, I, I think that everybody on the board has indicated that, um, that the town as a whole, as embodied in the code, indicates that including trailers during the winter time on, in front lots establishes an undesirable change in the neighborhood. I saw the pictures of where the lot was, you know, the trailer was located. And by all means, the applicant maintains his yard. Um, and it looks like, uh, you know, a very nice property, but it's clearly visible, at least from one of the roads. Um, and it is quite substantial. I don't think that there is a physical or environmental effect. But, you know, the fact that you have the trailer, that's a decision that you've made, um, and that's self, self-created. So, um, I wanted to get that on the record. Um, that's for my no vote. The good news is, um, it's a five-one vote and I am all the one, uh, lone dissenter. So your variance has been approved tonight. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Kenny, will you call the next matter, please?
Appeal by Anthony Papa, agent for a variance from section 220-25B1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 11 Gloria Lane, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district to maintain a six-foot fence which exceeds the height limit in the side yard. Fence section 220-25B1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet as constructed. A six-foot high fence is located in the side yard. Therefore, two-foot fence height variance is required. One met, one, uh, nine notices were mailed, one response.
Uh, dear zoning board members, my wife and I have lived at 12 Gloria Lane for the past 37 years. The home is directly across the street from 11, 11 Gloria Lane. The subject of the appeal for a zoning variance, the six-foot fence is not in front of the home and is not bordering the street. Since the fence covers the side yard and rear of the home, it does not change the character of the neighborhood, nor is it easily visible from my home. Since the owners of 11 Gloria Lane have very young children, the fence will provide the privacy and safety this family requires. We do not believe the six-foot fence will result in any adverse impact. For these reasons, we are in favor of having the board granting the required variance. If you have any questions, please let me know. James E. War, Wars, Zach? Um, attorney-at-law, 12 Gloria Lane, Niskuna, New York. And I just wanted to say, I forgot to say this on the last case, there are a number of people online. And if you are wishing to speak on a case and you hear the chairman call for any, but any comments, just unmute yourself, please.
Will the applicant please come forward? Mr. Papa?
Hi.
Is, uh, uh, can you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Anthony Papa, the 11 Gloria Lane, or my address?
Uh, no, the, well, yeah, yeah, your business address if you're the agent.
403 Shaba Road, Boston Lake, New York.
Okay. And, uh, you installed the fence there?
Yes.
Okay. And you're going to be, uh, acting on behalf of the applicant this evening, the, the property owner?
Yes.
Okay. And you heard at the outset what I said with respect to us being a seven-person board? There's only six of us here. Um, I assume, I shouldn't assume, but do you want to move forward?
Yeah.
Okay.
You'll have enough to do next month, I'm sure.
All right. Um, so, well, why don't, uh, you, well, first of all, you installed this already, is that correct?
Yeah, it's.
Okay. Um, and, uh, did you apply for a, a building permit at the time?
I did. Um, I learned a lot of things actually in that process. Um, the building department or the building inspector came out because I had, they wanted a six-foot fence. I can't remember where they moved from, but, um, throw it out. Thank you very much. They wanted a six-foot fence around the whole property, being that it's a wide open corner. So, you know, great, sent it in. They basically said absolutely not and explained why. And that's great. I learned a lot of things about Niskuna. Um, he came out, we figured everything out. I applied again. And unfortunately, there's an easement, a utility easement. So we kind of, we had a lot of changes, not that that has anything to do with this, or I'm trying to.
So, okay, so let me just, so you, you, you did find out the, the six-foot fence wasn't allowed at least for a substantial amount. You, you, you enclosed the entire yard, correct?
We did, yeah.
Okay. And you enclosed the yard with, except for a small portion of it with a, a four-foot fence, correct?
Yeah, so like the two front yards are, I guess there's not a fence in the one front yard. Like, that's actually front-facing the front yard? And the side front yard is, everything's a four-foot. Oh.
Everything's a, just, just for clarification here, just to simplify it. Uh, there's a fence encapsulating the entire property where the, the line is drawn, correct?
Yes.
And then we're talking about the yellow area, which is a six-foot fence?
Yeah, it's barely 10 feet. It was, um, there's a, like, kind of drew the retaining wall. And being that that's there, it gave access to the kids to get on the retaining wall. So, had it, oh, perfect. The six-foot fence allowed me to carry it over. So if children get on that, they can't fall off the extremely far part or the high part. I'm sorry.
All right. Well, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is you, you applied for the, the building permit and you were told that you could not build a six-foot fence there, correct?
What, I guess, the six-foot fence was going not there originally at all. It was the other, like, road-facing both of the corner lots. And he said they're both front yards. So I understood that, but I didn't, what I didn't know is that you can't put a six-foot fence in, in front of the back of the house. So that was kind of a change made on the spot. It was going to be a four-foot fence until I ran into that retaining wall and then I made some adjustments, which I didn't realize was going to be a problem.
Well, do, do we have two front, two front yards here?
Yes, it's a.
Right. So we have two, we have two front yards.
So you just have to wait because everything's, that's being said is recorded and online and people who are online can't hear unless you're speaking into the microphone. And it also helps for the minutes later on.
So we have two front yards here and the building inspector, when you, or the, the building inspector advised you of that, correct?
Yeah, so the, on the left side of the house there, all that, all the way around, that whole, everything road-facing there, they wanted six foot, but he said you can't because it's the front yard.
Okay. And, and were you just confused? You didn't understand that on the other side? Or did you understand that you couldn't put a six-foot fence?
No, I understood that, but it was, I didn't realize I couldn't, like, the backyard started at the back of the house.
The back corner?
Yeah, that, yes, thank you.
So the, so the building, the building inspector advised you that you could put a six-foot fence if you started at the back corner of the house, correct?
Yeah, he said that and it would have ended up nothing, like, a couple of feet that ended up being six foot. So they just made it four foot, the whole thing, just to make life a lot simpler. Um, along the.
Well, hold, hold on. I, I'm confused here. We are talking about that area that's yellow is six foot currently, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not all four feet. That area is six feet.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to ascertain how we got to put six foot, a six-foot fence there.
To carry over the retaining wall.
Okay.
Keep the kids.
And at the time that you made that decision, were you aware that it was impermissible to put a six-foot fence there?
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
I was not. I'm sorry if I misspoke.
All right. Well, that's what I just want to clarify.
No, I'm sorry. I'm not.
Okay. So then, um, at what point did you become aware that you could put the six-foot fence starting at the back corner of the, uh, the home and that wouldn't have been an issue?
When he called me and said that he denied my inspection.
Okay. All right. And then based upon that, you decided to make the variance application that you're currently making?
Yeah.
Okay. So why can't we move the fence to the back corner of the property?
They're going to lose space for the kids.
Okay. How much space are we going to lose? How far back is it from where the fence is currently located to where it would be located at the back corner of the property?
The length of the house, almost.
Right. It seems like there's a fairly sizable yard though, even if we lost that property for the kids.
Yeah, well, they were, they were trying to keep the kids back in that corner to keep them away from the visibility of the road.
Well, I mean.
And it was kind of like the other side was going to be for the dogs.
If we, if we, if we moved it to the back corner, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we moved the fence to the back corner of the wall of the, the home, we wouldn't have to deal with the retaining wall issue, correct?
It runs the whole length of the house. Maybe my drawing wasn't as great as it should have been for that.
It runs the whole length of the house?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess, man.
I see the retaining wall there, but I mean, you, you could attach to the back corner of the, the property.
Goes, I don't know how to. Can I point at something up there?
Uh, yeah, why don't you grab the microphone and then you can go and point.
It.
You just could grab.
I was just going to show like how it runs the whole length of that. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, show me like, you know, where does the, the retaining wall, what precludes you from moving it to the back corner of the wall based upon the retaining wall?
The retaining wall goes right here is where the six-foot fence stops. And then we bumped it up. It's kind of hard to tell in the blown-up picture, but it runs straight down.
So the retaining wall is on behind of that fence, the retaining wall continues?
I'm stopped at the retaining wall right here. And then we bumped up over it.
Okay. So, so I guess again, the question is behind the fence, the retaining wall continues?
Yes.
Okay, for the entire length of the house?
Yes.
Okay. Because on that diagram there, it appears that it ends prior to the back corner of the property. That's incorrect.
That's me not being able to draw.
Okay. So I'm, I'm just trying to figure it out for the record and make sure that I have an understanding.
Sorry.
Okay. Does anybody else on the board have questions?
Uh, yes, I have a few questions in the similar area. Um, as you go through that gate in the six-foot fence that you have installed, uh, what's the nature of the ground? Does it go up or down as you go towards the backyard?
Up.
So, uh, as you go towards the backyard from that gate, you're going up a, up a slope a little bit.
Yeah, like.
Or is it level?
It's, yeah, it, it's pretty flat. That's about it.
It's flat. Okay. It doesn't go down?
No.
Okay, and can you estimate how many panels, since you installed the fence, how many panels are from that lower right-hand corner, the right end of the yellow line to where it would be in line with the back of the house?
Probably five, something like 40 feet's worth of.
Are they 10-foot?
Eight-foot sections.
Eight-foot sections. So if there were four or five of those.
You're, yeah, get 32 to 40 feet between the difference of four and five. So, roughly.
And what's the material of the fence?
It's a vinyl fence.
And is the portion that's along the right-hand side of the image we're seeing, is that, um, four foot or six foot?
Four foot. That's, um, around, down that length is chain-length fence. There's a row of trees there, so it.
Okay, so it's not vinyl on that side.
Pointless to put a privacy fence over thick trees.
Okay, so for our understanding, the only area that is a six-foot fence is really between the re, uh, retaining wall where you had to change it and that right-hand corner.
Yeah, it's like eight, eight to 10 feet the section with a gate in it.
Are there any doors, uh, on that side of the house?
No. No, the, the retaining wall, no.
Are there any pieces of equipment on that side of the house? Like a, a condenser or air conditioner? Anything mounted on the ground or?
The gas, the utilities are there.
A, a gas meter?
Yeah.
Any windows to a basement or anything?
No, on the, no, not on the side.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other members of the board that have questions? Having heard none, are there any members of the public that wish to be heard for or against this application? Having heard none, are there any members of the public who wish to be heard for or against this application? Okay, sir, why don't you step forward, state your name and address for the record?
My name is Hugo Irisavri Conones. I listen, I live on fourteen twelve Rosio Boulevard, which is on the back edge of the house. So behind live, behind them.
Okay.
So I didn't object about the fence, because good fences make good neighbors, number one, okay? But what I came to help is to make sure that people understood that the house was expanded. Ten years ago, maybe, maybe twelve, um, to add an, uh, downstairs bedroom. Okay, I'm, I'm large main room. That wall was used to retain the wall that extended. To the question to Ms. Paseco as to what's there, the moat, excuse me, the wall that is there, the current wall that is there. It's a retaining wall to make sure that the, the house, the, the level, if you show the picture of the house, if you may. So you can see if that, um, curved space was not there in front of that face. Uh, of that fence, if that's big, you would have a huge concrete wall before they started putting the wood, a siding on it. Okay, so that's what, it was built for two purposes. All the space that we're gonna build, the new space that we're gonna build. And that only goes through that new extension. Beyond that, there is a space that has two air conditioners, one for that space and one for the rest of the house. And the gas is actually on the front of the house, and I believe you could probably make a little bit of it on that. So, but I've been living in this area for thirty-three years. I know both neighbors have lived in this house. And now I have not really met, I'm not friends with the new neighbors, although I've been friendly with them. Because I, their dogs bark at my dog. So, but that's not the issue. The way to make this look good, that's it. So if you're looking for aesthetics and make sure to improve with the community, like the neighbor across the street, uh, now in twelve. He sees this every day. Okay, in addition to that, he sees the other front, which is more imposing than this one. Because this, the houses yields down.
Okay.
So this is in the lowest part of the house.
Sir, so, so I just want to get a couple things straight.
Yes, sir.
You live behind this house?
Behind this house, yeah.
Okay, and you are for the application?
I am for the application, especially after, I spoke with the neighbor, and I knew that he was gonna write something. I didn't know what he was gonna say, because I did not get into his opinion. But, you know, we both laughed and, you know, I was walking my dog, and I said, you get something? And he said, yes, I did. I'm gonna write something in. And that's what it was.
Okay, and Laura, was there, uh, did I miss it, there was someone who, who wrote in? And was that individual, where did they, what is their address?
Yeah, so they are at twelve Gloria Lane, which they said is directly across the street.
Okay.
It's right across.
And where, and I, I must have zoned out for a second, were they for or against the?
They are for the variance.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Do you have anything else to, uh, any other?
No, uh, there were other changes, and, you know, there are like three levels in the back of the house. So what is the back corner of that house? There is the so-called back corner of the current extension of the house. There is the current back extension of the original house, excuse me, the corner of the original back of the house. And then there was a Florida room that was added, and that could have potentially. So there are multiple layers of back corners of the house when you get to that point.
Okay.
And I'm sorry that he didn't know about it, but I.
I understand, and your position is that this is the most aesthetically pleasing place that this fence could be located. And if we started going to the back corner of the property, it would do a disservice to the property. Is that?
I think so, yeah.
Summation of your position?
Absolutely, this looks really good, and like, there are children there. I think it's good for us to have young children in neighborhood, so I'm all for it.
Thank you so much for your time. Thanks for coming in. Is there anyone, uh, else that wishes to be heard for or against this application?
Including online.
Anybody online? Okay, um, all right, so is there anyone, is there any discussion on this matter? Is there anyone who wishes to make a motion for or against the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion to approve this. Even though in the past I've never really approved a, uh, fence, uh, going to the front of the house. And the rare occasion I, uh, find a reason to approve it. Uh, in this case, the benefit can't be achieved in any other way. Because, uh, the wall next to it, and it looks like from, uh, the neighbor mentioning that there's. Equipment on the other side, so with the four feet fence, all these equipment probably be showing, uh, to the public. And, uh, it seems like, uh, this is the best way for this property, uh, to have that fence. Especially with the wall, uh, adjacent to the fence. Uh, and actually, in this situation, it does not cause any undesirable change to the neighborhood. It, it improves, uh, the look, uh, when people look in at that property. Um, is the request substantial? It is substantial as we don't allow usually. And we don't like to set precedent to have a six feet in the front of, uh, the properties. And we always request it to be in the back. Uh, the builder of the fence, uh, has looked into all the different options. And it seems like that was the best option for this specific property. Uh, is the request, uh, have any environment effect? It doesn't, uh, in, in this case at all. And, uh, is the difficulty, uh, uh, was it presented by the applicant? I think, uh, the situation, again, I go back to the unique property here and the wall there. And for all these reasons, uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve it.
A motion's been made. I will, uh, second that motion. Um, I would like to note, um, some unique features with respect to this property. And, uh, like Mr. Latif, I as well, um, have concerns about six foot fences. Um, what's unique in my mind, in addition to what Mr. Latif said, was the fact that the applicant. Um, really, uh, honored the code by, by largely, um, installing a four foot fence. Throughout the remainder of the property, um, and only in this limited location was a six foot fence utilized. Um, for the reasons that Mr. Latif indicated, it makes sense to have a six foot fence. Because of the unique, unique, um, uh, topography of the property, the retaining wall. Um, as well as the fact that there's, uh, utilities, um, directly behind the wall. That moving the, um, moving the fence back, um, to allow for a six foot fence. Um, would, to the back corner of the property, would, i- i- in essence, resulted in undesirable change to the neighborhood. And, um, in addition to that, there is the retaining wall here. So if you were to reduce the fence to a four foot at this location, then, um, you would defeat some of the purpose. Um, for which the fence exists in the, the first instance. So, uh, I, you know, I, I, I believe that this is a unique situation. And for that, for that reason, I am, um, going to second the motion. I don't think it's gonna result in an undesirable change to the neighborhood. Uh, it is substantial. Um, there is no, uh, negative, um, environmental, um, physical impacts on the neighborhood. By virtue of this relatively small request for a six foot fence. Um, although it, any variance is arguably self-created to a certain extent, um, that's not necessarily determinative in my analysis. So for those reasons, I, uh, concur with Mr. Latif in second the motion. The motion's been made, it's seconded. Mr. Kenny, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Latif?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Stein?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hoak?
Yes, for the reasons stated. Your variance has been approved. We call the next matter, uh, Mr. Kenny.
Appeal by Robert Kwiatkowski for a variance from section two twenty dash thirteen, schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna. As it applies to the property at nineteen twenty-nine Region Street, Niskuna, New York. Located in the R two medium density residential zoning district, to construct an addition partially within the side yard setback. Section two twenty dash thirteen, schedule IC requires a side yard setback of fifteen feet. As proposed, the addition will be ten feet, six inches from the side property line. Therefore, a four foot, six inch side yard setback variance is required. Fourteen notices were mailed, zero responses.
Will the applicant please come forward? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, uh, Robert Kwiatowski, nineteen twenty-nine Region Street.
Mr. Kwiatowski, um, uh, you heard, uh, my, my, uh, prologue. With respect to the size of the board, your ability to request that, that your matter be adjourned to the next meeting to allow a full board to be present. You understand that?
Yes.
And notwithstanding that, you want to move forward tonight with only six members of this board, understanding that you need four affirmative votes? For your, uh, variance to be approved?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you tell us about, uh, your project? And, uh, what steps you've, uh, taken to attempt to mediate, mitigate the need for, um, the four and a half? Or, yeah, four and a half foot side yard, uh, setback?
Yes, um, so this really started many years ago when we wanted to expand the house. Um, we looked at different costs of maybe adding us just, you know, a second floor. Um, taking the roof off and, and building a second floor. That was pretty expensive. And we didn't really want to have, um, a colonial type of house. Um, the other thing is, is we have a single garage, and we wanted a double stall garage, um, to put our cars in. And as we get older, we don't want to be clearing the cars, um, all the time. It's getting harder as it is. Um, so we looked at putting a, a garage in the backyard, and we filed for a permit to have that done. And that got denied because of how much space it takes up in the yard. Um, so really, we thought, let's, let's see what we can do with a design off the side. Uh, we've got twenty feet-ish to the property line. Let's see what we can do there. So we had the original design drawn up, um, but what we're looking for is a little bit more, um, space in the garage. And also, uh, more closet space on the second floor, so kind of rearranging the second floor. Uh, we feel that the design with the way the, the roof will be, as, as it is today. Um, will actually shed water, uh, better and off to the back of the yard. Instead of, uh, to the side towards our, uh, neighbor. Um, because currently, today, we have, uh, drainage coming off the house, off the corners, gutters all the way around the house. And it kind of goes across our driveway, creating ice and, and heading towards our neighbor's house. So, um, there's a couple, you know, reasons why we want to, you know, do this design. Plus, um, our house is, uh, a very small house. Um, it's only got one bath, um, three bedrooms. And, um, you know, as, uh, our kids, we raised our kids there, we have three kids. And when we, when we entertain those, you know, our kids coming over with their significant others and other family members, the house is pretty small. So we want a little bit bigger of a house to entertain. Um, and my daughter's getting married in, uh, in March. And so we don't know when kids will come and grandkids and all that stuff, so we want a little bit more space in the house. Um, during COVID, we started working from home. So we took over the two bedrooms that are our current offices, um, one of them's a small bedroom. And the other one, um, is, is my office now. Um, so that will help as well with, um, living space. Um, uh, because we'll have two rooms up above with a bathroom, which could become our offices. And we could rearrange the, the second, uh, the first floor. I should have brought water, I got dry mouth, sorry.
So good. Um, okay, is, uh, with respect to, I just, are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll have some questions for you. Um, you answered some of your questions. You explained, um, why you, you're contemplating the project. Um, I, I guess the question for you, the next door neighbors looking from Region Street to your property. The next door neighbors to your right would most, most, uh, would be, uh, most impacted by this project. And the need for this particular variance, um, who are those neighbors?
They're actually here.
Okay, um, have you spoken with them about this project?
We have not. I've, uh, tried to, but we, with the schedule and everything.
Okay, well, I'm sure we'll hear from them, so I'm not gonna ask you to, to theorize what they're going to say. Um, okay, uh.
And we also have a couple neighbors that are online, and my wife's online.
Okay, and everybody will have an opportunity to speak. Um, is there any other, are there members of the board that have questions? I know you spoke, uh, to the drainage issue. You've contemplated that in the design. Um. Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Hoak.
I usually defer to engineering questions to Ms. Pacheco here, so I thought we would have some here.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I do have a few questions. Thank you for talking about the drainage towards the neighbor. Uh, the existing house, um, can you describe the nature of what the addition is going to look like relative to that? For appearances?
Oh, yes, um, so, uh, I have actually pretty good relationship with Tom Cunizzo, the building inspector. We, since we moved in, we've pulled, I don't know how many permits on everything we do, pool, deck, shed, you know, fence, everything. Um, and we talked about the height and the look of the house. Um, I ran it by him on, on my thoughts. And, uh, you know, he didn't see any, um, any reasons that it wouldn't be consistent with all the other houses in the area. Um, we, our house is set back about two to three feet more than the rest of the houses. Um, so that's why you see on the garage, it's gonna come out a couple of feet. So that couple of feet is in line with the rest of the houses. And, um, he did know, he, he did note that, you know, if we asked for the four feet, that, um, you know, we'd have to do what we're doing today. But the, the look of the front of the house is, you'll, you'll see, it's, it's not really tall. I'm keeping it kind of low profile, where it's kind of like a half wall, and then it's the roof, right? So you'll have, uh, when you're in the house, maybe you'll have on the edges, you'll have a, you know, a ceiling, that's right here. And then we do, yeah, you can see it right there. So, and actually, you could see some, I don't know if that's water. Now, that was after it was sealed, so that's not water. But you can see how the drainage coming down the house kind of flows over. And I, I did my best with, with a kind of rock drainage kind of to, to catch it, um, and then bring it to the back.
Okay, uh, thank you, Laura, for pulling that up on the screen. Um, so we can see where the gutter downspout is coming towards where it's currently an asphalt pad, correct?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Um, and what's the material of your house? It's hard to make out.
That's a brick, brick ranch.
Okay, and the material for the addition, as you're looking at that, what is the material on the outside of the house?
That's all gonna be just typical vinyl siding.
Okay, so it'll be then a blend of brick and vinyl siding?
Yeah, and we're thinking of, uh, doing some type of covering on, on the brick. So you'll have like a stone facade on, on the bottom, and then, um, kind of smoothing out, um, the brick. We're still figuring out how that look.
Okay, but, uh, I believe you said that, as you spoke with the, um, the town engineer. That, and, and I know this is kind of hearsay, that it would be consistent with the other houses. The neighboring house looks like that's siding, is that?
Yeah, there's a lot of siding, um, houses that are sited in the area. So to my left and to my right are siding, across the street on the corner of Coolidge is siding. All up and down Coolidge and up and down, uh, Region Street, there's houses with siding.
And the roofing, would that also be similar to what you've currently got?
Yes, that should be somewhere around a forty, forty year, um, uh, roof. And then, yeah, and then there'll be a little, uh, what do you call, a little, um, like a soffit thing over the garage. Um, and that deck will be, uh, either, either that or to be like a, a black, um, you know, metal roof. Just a little piece.
Okay, and, uh, I know we talked briefly about the water coming off the roof. Uh, you've got the stone on the right hand side of the driveway there. Is that the lowest part of your property?
Yeah, um, that is the, uh, well, uh, the backyard is actually lower. It kind of goes, it kind of goes towards the back corner this way. You see that big tree? Kind of everything slopes towards that big tree.
Okay.
But off to the right, it does slope down towards our neighbor's house, and their yard is up a little higher, so there's slopes into ours. So we have this like little, uh, ravine, if you will, like, you know, so if any, any water were to pool in there, and it does. Actually, we have landscaping in there right now. Um, so we put landscaping along that white fence all the way down on the right. And so you can see the water kind of draining and down, and down towards that big tree.
Okay, so, uh, you did just say that the, um, property to the right hand side there is higher than yours. So it slopes down into that stone area, correct?
Yeah, if you look at it, the, the property. Yeah, if you look at it, the, the properties will be rough, the, they'll be roughly even and ours kind of slopes down and then there slopes down right at the, the edge of the property. So right along about two to three feet to the left of that fence, it kind of slopes down. So we put in some, a little bit of dirt and some mulch there. So it kind of gradually comes down. So that, that little kind of valley is out maybe six feet from there at this point. If that makes sense.
That, that makes sense. And you said that there would be gutters along that side as well?
Yeah, yeah. So if, if the roof is like this, we'll have the gutter go this way and drain out the back. And if we have to put, actually, I've been thinking about doing that actually because the water pools and messes with the mulch. So putting a drainage in, in the ground, you know, so that the water just kind of flows to the back.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions for members of the board? Please, why don't you have a seat? We'll see if anybody else wishes to be heard on relative to this application.
Thank you.
Is there any members of the community that wish to be heard for or against this application? Step up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Mauro Spazito, nineteen thirty-seven Regent Street. I live right next door to Mr. Kawikowski, who lives at nineteen twenty-nine Regent Street. We lived in that town since nineteen ninety-nine, so we're well past twenty-six years. I was going against this for a number of reasons and I think my wife wants to speak also. Wrote a couple of concerns down that I had and top of the concerns she had. And I'm going to read from this, from this sheet. Can I make a comment at something he said?
Well, sir, before you start, let me just, I just want to try to narrow what you're going to tell this board. This board has, you know, somewhat narrow jurisdiction, okay? And the issue before us is not whether or not the project is a good project, a bad project. The, the question really before the board is with respect to a variance, a four foot, six foot side yard setback variance, which I understand, based upon my understanding where your property is, impacts you.
That's why.
It's definitely germane to your, what you're talking about. But before you, you start, I just wanted to let you know that because just sometimes people get up and they just generally, I don't want this to move forward just because, okay? And I'm, I'm not saying you're going to say that. I'm just telling you because I know that there's, there's some people maybe online as well. I just like to focus the conversation as to how the granting or denial of the variance in and of itself is going to impact. That would, that would really help us out, I think.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, the concerns we had were, part of it was privacy. It's, he's going to be up so much higher. He's going to have four windows on that one side facing us. And, you know, and we have windows facing that way. And, you know, we do things in our rooms and, you know, as the sun comes up, we like to have the windows open to, because that's where, the sun's coming in at that angle and just lightens up the house significantly. So, you know,
With, with respect to that, sir, what if he moved it back? An additional, if his property was back farther, so he didn't need the setback anymore, but he still had windows on that, that would, you would still have the same impact, right?
Probably, and then there's the backyard issue. You can, you know, I'm not trying to say we do anything crazy in the back.
No, I'm just saying with respect to your first issue, and your first issue being there's windows on the side of the, the proposed addition that would face our windows, right?
Yes.
If he moved his property back, say the plan that he developed didn't include the need for a side yard setback, but he had the same windows.
Yeah.
You would still have the same concern and
Probably, yeah.
And it really wouldn't, so it doesn't really have anything to do with the side yard setback, does it?
It's kind of like, you know, privacy and it's also, he's that much closer and that area is very restricted. Matter of fact, he had texted us last year saying our bushes, which, you know, summertime, they get a little crazy. He texted my wife, you know, can we trim them back? And that day, I trimmed them back because he was saying he couldn't get through because once his cars are parked and he, and my plant is overgrowing the bush, it becomes like a very narrow, I don't know, causeway or whatever.
Yeah, Laura, can you put the, can you put the picture up, please? The property, the relevant property, just so we have it all in front of us, if you don't mind? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that.
So what, what bushes are you referring to? The bush up front there?
Yeah, it, it gets a little crazy and, you know, sometime, I, sometimes I'm on top of it and sometimes, you know, I need, you know, kick in the back.
What is that, a burning bush there?
Yeah. And like I said, he was saying he couldn't get back there. He was having trouble getting in and out of that area. Egress was an issue, I guess. And so I went out there and I cut it back and, you know, again, he texted us, can you move it? So he's never had any problems getting a hold of us. That's what I'm saying. It's, whenever he wanted something done or something from us. So we cut it back and egress was no longer an issue. Now, my concern is if he comes to the right so much more, it, it just causes, you know, it's space and, you know, and that's a decent sized space, but I've figured, you know, the other side of this property is so much bigger. There's so much space and this is kind of like more congested, in my opinion.
Okay, sir, what other concerns do you have?
Part of it was, you know, water coming off the house. And we get water in our basement, like a lot of houses in Niskiuna. And we've had water issues in our basement a number of times. I purposely dry lock my basement every five years. So even there, twenty-six years, I've done twenty, you know, five times going on. And I just worry about water pooling and water's always been an issue pooling. A lot of the yards you'll see in this unit this time of year, I take my dog for a walk. You see, you know, you see that standing water and that's, that's a concern of mine.
Sir, did you hear Mr. Kwiatowski with respect to his, as I understood it, he had made plans to, as I understood it, would have potentially made the situation better with the, the, with respect to the water issue, because it's going to be more contemplated. And he has a specific plan established, as I understand it, for the
Hope so.
Water drainage. Okay? You heard him say that?
Yeah, I did. The only concern I had is, you know, because of, you know, the water issue you have in this unit is I, there's a lot of times I've opened up my basement and been surprised by, I could, one time we could have went swimming down there. We had the firemen over. So for us, it's caused some nightmares. That's why I bring that up. I, I know he brought it up and that's, I wanted to bring up that concern because, again, one year I could have went swimming down there.
Right.
A lot of things needed to get replaced and they did. And, you know, how messy that can get.
Understood.
That was, that was my concern was the runoff and the closeness and the privacy and that being such a congested area as is, especially with that burning bush. You know? You know, if it, you know, in full bloom.
Understood.
It was an egress issue.
Okay. Are there other members of the board that have questions with respect?
Yeah, just, just a quick question, that fence, is that on your property?
Yes, it is. It's our property, yes.
The white fence?
Yes.
And I
That's not the most updated picture either. There's actually a, a shed there. Not right up against the fence, but pretty close. I don't know the distance. I've never gone out and measured it or give any issue over it.
Goes to the back of your house?
It, it completely encloses the backyard.
And, and does it have?
I'm sorry?
In the corner of the back of your house, that's where that fence starts? The white fence?
Yeah. What do you mean?
Like you have the front of your house?
Yep.
And this is the back where Laura was pointing? This is the front, this is the back? Does that fence start in the back?
I guess you could say it starts, however you want to consider it's, it's a start. It completely encompasses the yard. The dog can, we have a dog, it can run around freely without it getting out and endangering itself.
Okay, so, Laura, if you could go back to that. Okay. Just curious because
I also think that the plant
It is in the back corner, right?
That's actually more up to date if you want to.
Yeah, you guys can't speak without going to the mic, please. We'll, we'll ask you more questions, you'll come up. I'm just waiting if, so, if your neighbor was to add the addition he's talking about.
Yes.
All he's looking for a four foot, it's six inches, the side setback on the side.
On the side, yes. On the right.
So, you still have from your fence, would you still have ten feet in there clearance?
I don't know the exact.
Because it's supposed to be fifteen and he's looking for only four point six inches. So if we were to measure from your house to the existing garage he has, approximately, do you guys have an idea how far that is?
No, I've never measured it. I've never
Do you have any?
Property and taken, I know he's had several surveys done.
So maybe when the applicant comes back, I'll ask him that question.
Yeah, we, I mean, the only time we had anything done.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Is there any other questions for this, this witness?
That's your house to the right?
Yes.
By the tree?
Yes.
Okay.
That tree's no longer there.
And we're looking at, this would be a hip roof and you were concerned about the window?
Yeah.
Those two windows that you got on your house, what are they used for?
It's a changing area, it's an office, it's a multi
What are they, you have to talk?
I'm, I'm sorry, it's a changing area. That's kind of like my, you know, I have like closets in there and things like that. It's where I, I go to change. It's, you know, it's your typical smaller cape in Niskiuna. So she kind of has, you know, that's where we go to change.
And then the top window, what's that used for?
I'm, I'm sorry, that is what the top window is used for. I'm sorry. The window on the bottom on the first floor, that is like a TV room. And it kind of like, you know, when people, my friends come over.
Okay. The top window?
That's, that's the changing room. I apologize. I got, I got mixed up. That's the changing room. That's where we go to change.
That's all I got.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, sir, why don't you have a seat for now?
Yep.
Are there anybody else that, any other witnesses here that wish to, any other members of the community that wish to be heard for or against the application? Sure, why don't you step forward, state your name and address for the record, please?
Mr. Cardona, I do see your hand up and we will get to you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Kathleen O'Neil Spazito. I live at nineteen thirty-seven
Could you talk into the mic, ma'am?
I sure can. My name's Kathleen O'Neil. I live at nineteen thirty-seven Regent Street next door with my husband. And, you know, my husband brought up a few things. The biggest concern certainly is water runoff. I understand gutters, you know, help, but I don't think they're foolproof. We have had a lot of issues with water in our yard that we've worked very hard to mitigate over the years. We have had a sump, we have a sump pump where the water in the yard gets, in the ground gets so heavy that it continually circulates and it was going and we've had them fail and replace them. We've added gutters to our home. We have plastic tubing going, you know, directing water out in the yard. So it's been a problem and we've, and we've dry locked multiple times, all to try to keep the basement dry and healthy for two people that suffer from allergies and asthma. So I, I am concerned a great deal about, you know, anything that's going to create additional water in the basement. And secondly, privacy, you know, is an issue. And, and the property, you know, is right next door. They're already tight properties. There are small parcels in Niskiuna. We have, you know, a little space on each side. So this just gives, brings it that much closer. You know, our neighbors on the other side have a second story with one window. You know, this is going to be four windows looking down on, on our property where we have that bedroom. You know, and that's used as a changing room now, but this is a, a four bedroom house and those are all bedrooms on that side of the house that face our neighbors. So it is a privacy issue, not just into the, the room, but into the, into the yard. Also, I'd like to talk a little bit about the, I, I didn't see any plans for, I see a, a two car garage. I didn't know if there's any plans for a larger kitchen there. I know there is an LLC at that address, a baking. It's a upstate culinary. LLC is located at that address. I don't know if that garage is going to be with drop offs and pickups of any baking things, I'm not sure. But that was a question I had that maybe the neighbor could answer. And then I'd also like to talk, just mention the character of, of my, the, the desirability of my property if it's more confined. And also the character of Old Niskiuna. I think part of the beauty of the neighborhood that I live in, that we, we live in and, and I think everybody that lives in this neighborhood really likes it and doesn't want to move and is more likely to expand, wants to expand. What makes it so unique, I think, is that there's a beautiful mix of houses of all shapes and sizes, different styles. And it's not uncommon for people in our neighborhood to outgrow their homes. But there are larger homes in the neighborhood and it is very common to see people upgrade, live in the, and move to a larger home in our neighborhood and they exist. And vice versa. You will see older people that, you know, down, downsized. And I think that there's a real value in having homes of all shapes and sizes and smaller homes and, and larger homes. We had a neighbor that lived to the right of us and they outgrew their home and they moved just two blocks, you know, a couple of blocks down on Regent Street. So I think I covered everything I want to cover, but, you know, we, we, we would like to stay where we are too. But we appreciate the privacy that we have and are concerned with the water.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hold on, before you sit down, does anybody have any questions? For this member of the community? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I understand that there's people online. Why don't we take Mr. Cardona first?
Yeah, hi, good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Mr. Cardona, why don't you just state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, so Juan Cardona, I live at nineteen thirty-six Regent Street.
And where, where are you in relation to the Mr. Kwiatowski's property?
I'm right across, right across from both neighbors.
Okay. And what would you like to say, sir?
Yeah, so I just want to share that, you know, I'm in total favor of his project. I've known Rob, Rob for about four, four years since we moved to the neighborhood. And everything that he's done in his property is very well thought out. He goes and, and makes, makes sure that everything is done up to code. So I don't think that his project will have any effect on, you know, the, the neighborhood, the aesthetics of the neighborhood. And I'm sure that it'll be done up to code and to the best that it, it could be done. I also have my wife here who has some thoughts that she would like to share.
Could you just have your wife state her name and address for the record?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Monolopoulos Cardona. I also reside at nineteen thirty-six Regent Street with my husband Juan. Like, like my husband just shared, I do want to echo that we are in support of this project. The Kwiatowski family has been nothing but considerate neighbors. Rob takes really great care and pride in his property and has special consideration for the integrity of this historic neighborhood. Every project he has done on his property since we moved here in 2020, a lot of it has been done by him and has been so well thought out. His property is beautiful. I mean, I know you, you pulled it up, but I mean, from landscaping, there's not a leaf that will fall in the fall before he picks it up. I mean, snow, he really takes great, great pride. So really, I consider that this will add value to, to the neighborhood and the block and will be an absolutely beautiful home, even more beautiful than one it is now. I have no plan that the plan presented is well thought out and that Rob has considered all viable options before presenting this plan. And I am confident that this is the best option considering what he wants to do. And although we have only been in this beautiful neighborhood for five years, I do know that they have raised their family here and their children are about Uh, they have raised their family here and their children are about, uh, the age of my husband and I. Uh, in their late twenties and early thirties, and I understand why they want to stay in their home. And make this addition to be able to continue having these beautiful family memories, um, in the home that they raise their children in and to see. Future generations and grandchildren, um, be able to enjoy the, the hard labor that, um, the Kwiatskys, Marianne and Robert have. Have put in this home. So, um. To keep it, to short, you know, we are in support. We are right across the street and I do want to add that, you know, even with this project and, you know, um, I'm. We're currently expecting our first baby and, um. That doesn't bother us at all. Any like noise and things like that. We are in absolute support of, um, of the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, is there any, any members of the board have any questions?
Oh, go ahead, Diane.
Sorry, I'm another neighbor actually, but I could be off this. Good evening.
Will you, why don't you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Diane Collins. I'm at nineteen twenty one Regent Street.
And where are you in relation to, uh, Mr.? I say, I keep saying Kwiatkowski. I know I'm brutalizing the name. Um, but, uh, where are you in relation to his property?
I'm on the other side, um, so directly next door on the other side.
Okay. What, what would you like to say?
I would just like to say that, um, my husband and I are in support of the addition. We have no objections, um. To adding to the house and, uh, we think that it's good that people are trying to build bigger homes here. I'd like to echo Kelly and Juan and it's news to me about the baby. So congratulations. Uh, just hearing about that, but, um, but yeah, that's.
Breaking community news here tonight. Apparently we're, we're breaking community news here tonight.
Exactly. No, this has been a fascinating, um, uh, board meeting to sit in on. Um, I appreciate being included. Um, but yeah, that's it. My husband and I are in support of the addition.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Collins?
Yes, Ms. Collins, uh, this is Mr. Latif. I got a question for you. You heard, you heard the neighbor on the other side have issues with water in their basement. And my question to you, do you have issues in your basement with water?
Uh, well, actually we, we have a leak in our basement. There's an issue, but I don't think it's associated with, uh, rainfall. So I, and I wasn't aware of the, um, of the issues that aren't the other neighbor was having. So, so yeah, there is a leak in our basement, but, uh. That's the issue. We don't know what it is. Uh, we need to, um, yeah, long story.
Issues in your basement, you saying, but you don't know what is causing it?
We're actually, we're not sure of the cause. Um. Yeah, uh, my husband's dealing with it. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Collins.
Thank you.
Um, is there anyone else online that wishes to be heard? Uh, Mr. Kwiatkowski, can you come, uh? Forward, I think we, we may have a couple of follow up questions for you.
Yeah.
So, uh, one of the follow up questions I had that was raised by the Espositos. Um, are you planning on running any businesses out of the property as, as expanded?
No, I'd like to address, um, a bunch of those, um. Things that they've said. Um, the LLC, the upstate culinary is my daughter's business. She started that and my wife could probably, she's online, um. Maybe a year or so ago. She didn't have a place, um.
Well, so you don't have to really explain why exactly.
Yeah. She had to put an address down.
Other than the fact that, um, you're not planning on using it, your, your property for any business purpose.
Absolutely not.
There's no baked goods that are going to be baked to the property. You're not.
Well, my wife's, but.
Oh, I'm sure she's a good cook or a good baker. Uh, but you're not going to be expanding the kitchen to accommodate any kind of commercial purpose, right?
No.
Okay. Um, at the beginning, at the outset of your, your testimony, indicated that you originally had a plan for, uh, a, a, a garage. That was going to be separate from the property that was denied. When was that application made?
Oh, it's a good question. I would say within, um. Within the last five years, so probably COVID.
That was going to be a self standing or, uh.
Yes.
Separate standing, uh, garage, uh, was there going to be storage on top of that garage?
Yes.
Okay. So that was going to be a large structure and it was denied because of the, the amount of square footage that that would have taken up on your, your property presumably behind. Where the current structure is contemplated. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And it would be fair to say that now you've just. Attached that, that garage structure to your main property?
Pretty much.
And, and by doing that, you're avoiding the necessity of that particular variance related to the square footage?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and in, in addition, you're also. Now, since it's, it's attached to your main property, you can use it for, you know, the upstairs for bedrooms and so forth.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and, uh, Lord, what was the basis for that? Do we have? Why the original structure was denied or?
Um, no, but in Old Niskiuna is one of the rare places that you actually can go over your accessory structure. Square footage with detached structures. So you're only allowed, um, thirty percent of your square footage of your lot. And Old Niskiuna lots are small enough that they can sometimes trigger that. So that would be my guess.
Okay. Um, and that, that's basically what you're telling us is your understanding of why it was originally denied.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Um, does anybody else have additional questions? Follow up questions? Then while we're waiting for that, Mr. Anikowski, do you have a question?
Yeah, in, in regards to the current state of your house, uh, what's the drainage on that side closest to the Espositos?
The drainage?
The existing drainage or what's gone?
Yeah, the existing drainage.
Existing drainage. Well, we have the gutters coming off that front corner and the back corner. The front corner kind of just goes over the, the pavement and, and goes down into that rock. And that rock is just, it's just rockwood felt. And, and it, that's, yeah.
And that, that, that drainage just pointed directly at the.
And it kind of slopes.
Property?
Yeah, slopes, um, towards their property, but also to the back.
Okay. And then, and then the, the future state. Can you just describe that briefly again?
Yeah, that, that won't be happening. It's all going to go, um, can you bring up the other floor plan, the, the front facing? Yeah, that one. As you can see, the, the roof is now pitching towards their house, right? Instead of, well, actually the other one was as well. But there'll be a, uh, a gutter that will be along that, that will go just from front to back and then drain down and, and go off the back of the house.
Okay, thanks. And, uh, can you pull up a picture one more time?
A- as the property, uh, as it exists now, it appears that the Esposito's property. Um, the drainage would drain. To your backyard and then behind your house. It wouldn't, would it flow to the Esposito's house or would it flow? From where the, where the gutter comes out, it would flow backwards down your driveway and then to the left. Is, is that accurate or no?
Could, could I ask for the microphone and go up and, can we do an aerial view? Much easier. Can I zoom in? Yeah, okay. All right. So, um, today we have a gutter on this quarter and a gutter on this corner, the front and back. This one actually drains down into, um, a tube. I've got crusher run here. That's that gray area. We were going to do a, a big patio back here, but we stopped and said, you know, since we can't put the garage back here. Cause of the accessory structures that we have taken up too much space in the yard. We were going to move that garage up and attach it to the house like we just discussed. So that drainage will come back, um, the gutter will come back and then come down the house. And we have a little, um, underground drainage that I was describing before that goes back here and catches the rest of the drainage. All this comes this way. All this water comes this way and water goes this way. So. If you see this line, the new landscaping that we did a couple of years back, um, that's actually the flow of the water. It actually goes back and goes this way. So we're just going to follow that natural flow of the water. Coming off the house, towards the back of the house.
And as, as contemplated, nothing will be discharged towards the Esposito's property.
No, actually it's going to improve. That's the point, one of the points.
May I ask, while you're standing there, um. Based on what I see in the drawings as part of your application, the addition is just. Extending the footprint of your house five feet towards the Espositos. Is that correct?
Um, you see this right here? This is our chimney. So this is the garage. So we're going to take this garage down and we're going to, from, from this fence right here, which is actually. Right about right on the property line, because I, I did have a land survey done and I provided it with the documentation. It, that's about twenty feet from, from this right here to here. So we're going to go nine feet. I believe that's about right, nine and a half feet. That makes sense. Um, so at least about ten and a half feet. And then what we'd have is, um, probably just a little sidewalk, uh, to go, to go to the back.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions?
Can, can we keep that up actually? So I wanted to address a couple of things that were said.
Okay.
If I could.
Why, why don't you address any of the other issues you want to make?
All right, um. As you can see, this, this fence actually follows the property line. And if you follow it forward, um, this is roughly only, I believe, four feet, something like that. So there's the mentioning of this bush, which has, um. Been a little bit of a, a problem over the years where it hasn't been really maintained and, and clipped and they get huge. Um, so I have a little bit of grass here and I have been, um, cleaning all the stuff that falls off of that, the leaves. And it, it makes it really hard to, to mow right there. So this property line from the house to, to this line is only like four feet. This bush grows over and hangs over our yard by a couple of few feet sometimes. Uh, along with a lot of the, the, um, landscaping, foliage and stuff over here. So that's kind of hanging on our yard a lot. Um, so I did ask them a couple of few times over the years to, you know, to have it trimmed so I can get my lot more through.
Anything else, sir?
Um, I'm also with the, um. Cause the drawing that you're showing right now with the house, that doesn't have the additional four feet. Um, that is actually at the fifteen feet, the original. So we were looking for the, the, um, variance to, to add another four feet to our exit. That side of the house, we can actually, those windows, because those are going to be closets. So we don't have a window issue of. Any privacy issue over here. The only window we'll have will be at the garage level, about this high. So there won't be any windows up there. We can eliminate those. So I'm willing to work with my neighbors. I did try to do that with this fence over. Um, but that didn't happen and that's why I had to spend a lot of money on the escaping to cover up the white fence that we. Did not want and we did not agree, agree upon it. Just showed up one day. We tried to about seventeen years ago.
All right, sir. So let's, let's.
Well, I mean, yeah, okay.
I, I understand, but I don't want to go far afield of.
Sure.
Why you're here tonight. Um, which is for your, your, you know, side yard setback variance request. I think you've given us, uh, enough information, uh, to contemplate that. If there's not any other member questions from the board. Um, I think we're in a position to move forward on your application. Okay? All right.
Thank you.
So, uh, we've heard from, uh, the applicant, members of the community. Is there anyone, uh, on the board who wishes to make a motion for or against the application?
Mr. Chairman. I looked at this is. I'm going to make the motion. We accept the applicant for the simple reason. You put a drain system. Would you pull up the house up again? That's good. That's good. The applicant's got a drain that comes down, goes across the driveway there, across the, uh, amazite. That goes into, uh, rocks that drain this way. It seems to me. That where the white fence is, is a higher elevation. Than the applicant. Am I correct? In other words, look at the fence. And then look at the grass, then look at your driveway and then look at the rocks. Isn't that a different elevation? Your lower elevation. Am I correct?
Vin, Vin, at this point, we're either going to make a motion. We're not going to take additional information.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
So if you're, if you're going to make a motion, why don't you just make the motion?
Okay. I make a motion. We accept the, uh, application. Because the applicant, uh, came here and I believe that. There's not the problems that were said.
Okay. Um, I am going to second, uh, the motion. Um, let me, uh, explain why. This is a, uh, a, a, a very difficult situation in these types of scenarios. Because we have opposition from a, a neighbor. Um, not only do we have opposition from a neighbor, but that neighbor, um, is the most, most closely, uh, or largely impacted by the request. For the specific variance that is being requested. However, and I'm taking this kind of out of order. The, the code requires us to contemplate whether the variance will result in an undesirable change in the neighborhood. Or a detriment. And, and what I'm really focusing on is the detriment component of that to nearby properties. Um, so the, the concerns that the Espositos have raised in my mind, which are legitimate, and I'm not seeing, suggesting otherwise. Um, are one of privacy and, uh, water in their basement. Okay. It sounds that. As the property is constructed now, there is water in your basement and that has been an ongoing problem. Um, I am not convinced in any way that the granting of this variance will increase that issue. In fact, to the contrary, um, I take the applicant, um, at his word and based upon the submissions that he's made to the. Um, board as well as the additional process he's going to have to go through with the building department to construct his property. Or to construct the addition, that the water issue is going to be diverted away from your house and may actually improve the condition of the water. So I don't believe that that can, you know, uh, establishes a detriment to your property. Um, with respect to the privacy, I, I recognize that bringing his, um, property over, uh, closer to your property line. Um, does infringe upon or, uh, implicate, you know, your privacy interest and you're, no, you're going to be closer to a certain extent. I think the applicant has indicated that he is going to attempt to mitigate that. One of the issues that you said was concerning to you was the fact that there were windows. Um, that would be facing your property and he's indicated he's going to mitigate, um, his design to eliminate those, those windows at least on the second floor. So that again is an attempt to, um, uh, address your concerns, directly address your concerns. So when balancing those factors, I, I don't find that the granting of the variance will have an undesirable change. More importantly, a detriment to, to your particular property, the most closely affected. Whether the benefit could be achieved by the applicant, um, by other feasible means. Um, I guess you could, the applicant could sell their house as the Esposito's request or suggested, um, which isn't, you know, uh. Necessarily something that, that, that couldn't be contemplated. I don't find that necessarily feasible. Um, because there is an alternative that, that, you know, a more feasible alternative that's available, which is the construction of the. Um, addition as is contemplated. So I don't think that, that the benefit could, could feasibly be achieved. Um, other, outside of the, you know, the sale of the property and moving their location. Um, I would also note with respect to the neighbors, there are, a- as much as the Espositos are concerned and in opposition. Um, there are neighbors who are also, um, close neighbors, um, of the applicant who strongly support his application as well. Although admittedly they're not a- as. although admittedly they're not as directly impacted as the Espositos. Whether the variance is substantial, it is substantial. Whether the variance will have adverse physical or environmental effects on the neighborhood or district, or more importantly, the Espositos properly, as I already outlined, I think that the steps that the applicant has taken to mitigate the water issue with respect to the design will actually improve the environmental conditions. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, I always have a difficult time finding any application that isn't self-created because always, or most of the time, we're dealing with something that an applicant is affirmatively doing that they could always opt not to do. And therefore, it is self-created to a certain extent, although that's not necessarily dispositive. Weighing these factors, and it's not clear cut and I think reasonable minds could differ, but weighing these factors in my mind mitigate in favor of approving the variance. For that long-winded explanation, I move to second the variance application. Ms. K, we call a roll? Motion's been made and seconded. Will you call a roll, please? Okay, we have a discussion on the application?
The question I have would be for Laura is, I know they were looking for 4.6 inches side setback. Do they still right now have five feet available if they want to build something?
Yes.
Because it's 20 feet, right?
Yeah, they could be, they could build till 15 feet. Yeah.
So they can build to 15, so that will allow them to expand their garage another five feet.
That's correct. They would have five feet without needing variance.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any, Ms. Chiketti, having heard the discussion, Ms. Chiketti, will you call a roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
As our chairman said, this is a, it's an interesting case here and I want to applaud the applicant for doing a great job with the property. And my concerns on this application, I think the property looks good to the neighborhood the way it is. Allowing to expand closer, I think it will cause more problem with the water issues that the neighbor have. And it's not as easy to solve it. They've been dealing with it for a long time and I think that could add more to the problem. As much as I know the applicant has presented a good case here and willing to not have windows on that side for the privacy, for those reasons that I mentioned, I'm going to have to vote no on the application because, again, the applicant is able to build another five feet without asking for more side setback. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Ms. Pacheco? As the chair and my colleagues have been saying, this is difficult to consider all the issues that are involved here, but I will be voting yes based on the information that's been presented and discussed. And while the concerns expressed by the neighbors are not minimized by this, I think the applicant has shown that with the processes he's already been through and applying to try to build the garage in a different place on the property and having that denied, that to have an equitable location on the property more feasibly constructed as an addition makes much more sense here and is not creating an undesirable change in the neighborhood. In terms of the drainage, I believe it can be feasibly constructed to divert the water flow away from the most impacted neighbors. And for those reasons, I vote yes. Mr. Daley?
I vote yes for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Stein?
I agree, this is a difficult decision. I think the neighbors on both sides of the opinion should be commended for being involved in this process. I think Chairperson Hope did a great job in explaining his thinking. I agree with him, so my vote is yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for coming out, the applicant. I think it's a well-thought-out plan. And for the Espositos, I appreciate that your concerns are valid and they're true. So, you know, I understand that and I think the board understands that. But for the reasons stated by my colleagues, I approve, yes.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, for all the reasons stated, I vote yes. Your variance has been approved by a vote of five to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other matters before the board this evening? Having heard none, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.